... Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors order for July 24th, 2018. We'll call Mr. Beeter.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Magsman?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Have a moment in the conference reflecting on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received this proposal as a...
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second in any discussion, on favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried, public comments, anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda. Moving on the claims and payments for the county, Susan?
The county expenditures this week total $311,789.84. Three one one, seven eight nine, point eight four.
So moved on resolution.
Second.
Moved in second in any discussion. This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution for expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Country View's expenditures that will be paid this week total $1,845.91. One eight four five, point nine one. We're holding off on the $300,000 in June benefits payment to the county due to lack of funds.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved in second in any discussion. This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a receipt project updates from departments and elected officials.
Morning Kathy.
Good morning Board, Kathy Nicholas County Engineer.
Morning.
Our maintenance crews are out mowing and blading and hauling rock. Our Cedar Wopsie Road is still closed for several more weeks as we replace large culverts for next year's resurfacing of Cedar Wopsie. We're replacing two 60-inch pipes in two locations and that is the Cedar Wopsie portion from Wagner Road over to Highway 63. So there's a lot of traffic detouring down to Dunkerton Road. And lastly, I wanted to introduce Brett Armstrong. He's our summer intern this year. He will be a senior at Iowa State this coming fall in civil engineering and he'll be with us for just a few more weeks before he heads back to classes at Iowa State. Can I answer any questions?
Kathy, can you, what's the timeframe on the Finford Bridge?
So that did start a week ago yesterday, July 16th, we're anticipating three to four month closure, you know, weather permitting. There's a, I believe that is a seven day working, working days allowed per contract that normally does not include the weekends. We don't charge for rainy days, et cetera, so it will probably be well into September or October. I will keep you posted, they're just barely getting started now removing some of the guardrail on the deck. So it's going to be several months yet.
Thank you.
Would you say 70 working days?
70 working days, yes.
Thank you.
You're going to introduce a young man?
You introduce him.
I'll sit there.
Brett. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Have minutes approved for July 17th, 2018.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, on favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. We have hearings, 905 hearing on bid opening for a purchase of tax administration software and a 907 hearing bid opening for a purchase of Blackhawk County phone system upgrades. Next is consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at the business associate agreement between Blackhawk County and Iowa County Technology Services. Be approved as recommended by Kim Beeter, IT Director.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Kim on this? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County and Envision Architect LTD Black Waterloo Iowa for engineering services for the design and specifications pre-engineered steel building located in Gilbertville Iowa, replacement of current shop facility, total amount of $37,000, be approved and direct to charity sign for same as recommended by Kathy Nicholas County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
In our FY 20 budget, we will be replacing our, we would like to replace our Gilbertville shop. In order to facilitate that, we need to have some design services done. A firm who can, who can give us a set of plans and work with us to get our permits as we need. We budgeted $30,000 for these engineering services in the FY 19 budget. We did send out proposals to numerous architectural firms around northeast Iowa. We received six proposals back. Envision was the second lowest bidder, the second lowest bid, excuse me, and we chose them based on their experience with similar projects. They've done several, many other public works buildings around the area that are on the smaller size that we're doing here for Blackhawk County. And we like the, the technical specialists who would be assigned to this project. So we chose Envision, we felt that they were the best fit for our needs for this, the design services. We'll also be splitting up the expenses into two years based on, they will do design services and then they will also do construction inspection for us once the building is under construction. So approximately $8,000 of their bid will be spent in FY 20 when we're actually under construction.
What was the little bit dollar amount?
It was $30,000 from Martin Gardner and Associates.
Did you research them at all?
Yes, and we've used them before, they've done some work for us at the Longfellow shop. And we have a scoring criteria that we put together when we sent out the proposals, so we scored everyone based on the same criteria. How well they submitted or conformed to our, what we would like to see in the RFP.
So they didn't score very well is what you're saying?
They didn't score quite as well as Envision did.
Kathy, now I've spoken to you, are you giving them the option of putting solar panels on their roof?
Yes, so we did, in the RFP request for proposals, we did state that we would like to see a designer who, who could consider solar. So what will be, you're welcome to come to those meetings Frank or any of you, we will be considering that in our design of this building.
Thank you.
Why don't you give us a little history of the building, what, what it houses?
So currently, the shop in Gilbertville is, it houses one motor grader and a pickup truck.
So you got one employee out there?
Currently, we have had two in the past and we would like to go back to having a two bay shop and a pickup truck located there. Just due to the, the way the districts, the greater districts are split up and the snowplow routes, it would be beneficial to have two, a truck and a grader located in that shop at Gilbertville. And this is located on the riverside of Gilbertville Road across from the cemetery in Gilbertville.
What's wrong with the current shop?
So the current shop, I believe, was built in the 1950s. It's, it's becoming outdated and inefficient in some respects. And we would like to have a larger shop to...
Does it have electricity?
Yes, it does have electricity and it has...
Bathroom facilities?
It has bathrooms, it's on the Gilbertville sewer system and their water system, so that's a nice thing about connecting it.
So the new building is going to be bigger than this one?
Yes, because it will have the two bays.
You have land there for it, or are you going to have to acquire land?
No, we will use the existing property, however, we will have to tear down the existing shop and then reconstruct the new one, probably very close to the similar, the same footprint as the existing building.
What's that spending cost, you know?
We budgeted, I believe, $250,000.
We haven't budgeted anything yet, have we?
Well, that's, no, for FY 20, we're estimating, in our five-year capital plan, we estimated $250 for that building.
And that's including the 37 or no?
No, the design services were separate.
Any other questions?
We do own this building?
Yes, we do own the property that it sits on as well.
So you're going to go from one to two vehicles out there, graders?
Yes, we would like to move a grader, we have a grader there currently.
How come we haven't done that before?
I don't remember all the details, I think before I was here, we did actually have...
Two out there?
Two out there.
Oh, so, I didn't know where to go.
It's deep enough that a grader can fit in there and then a truck can squeeze in there next to the...
It has a diesel?
It does have a diesel fuel tank there.
Fuel, is that in the way? Bigging building?
I suspect that will have to be moved, but I, I don't know all those details yet.
Any other questions? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution at the business associate agreement between Blackhawk County and Community Services Network, be approved as recommended by Kim Beeter, IT Director.
Second.
Moved in second in any discussion on this? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution at the change order number one for the courthouse ceiling project in the amount of $3,469.52 to include the ceiling of the Iowa Judicial Branch Information Technology Room on fourth floor for the additional duck work and HVAC supplies be recommended as recommended, approved as recommended by Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Anything you want to add to this Rory?
Yes, good morning Board, Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent. One thing I do want to clarify here is the, in this change order, $1,960 of it is in regards to the room on fourth floor, the IT room on fourth floor. The additional duck work and HVAC supplies is basically additional supplies for throughout the whole project. So what we've ran into is we've needed additional duck work, additional reducers to accomplish the project, so it encompassed into one change order. The flex louvers and duck work equaled $1,509.52.
Any questions for Rory? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. And the next one you want tabled Rory?
Yes.
Okay.
Move table, item E.
Second.
Moved in second, on favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Nine other business motion at the appointment of Renatus Act to the Blackhawk County Planning and zoning board be approved effective July 24th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion on this? On favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. This is a resolution at the Finance Director be directed to transfer appropriations to various operating budget FY 18 for the offices as submitted and shown upon the record in the Office of Finance Director with such changes being made pursuant to 3331434.6 of the Code of Iowa.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the request for purchase of capital equipment recommended by Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer, be approved and direct to charity sign for same, purchase of radio system for $200,129.37 from Raycom to be used by the Engineering Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathy?
Yes, I presented some new information to you yesterday concerning the number of radios we need. We took a look at, at the number of radios that we felt we absolutely needed and we've decided that we can eliminate at least 10 radios from many of the black pickup trucks that sit out here across from the jail. Those are primarily used by the engineering staff, so we'll, we'll use cell phones in this case. There are several other trucks in our outchops that we feel that we would communicate with a cellphone if it was necessary to contact those individuals. You did ask me some questions about the existing system and how some of the issues with maintaining the existing system. And we've asked Diana Richardson to come and talk to you this morning about, she is from Raycom who is, who is providing the radio system, they service the radio system. We have purchases from them, she can answer any technical questions much better than I can about the system if you would like to ask a few technical questions.
How many vehicles are you going to put it in now?
So currently, we are showing that we would need a quantity of 61 radios.
Fifty-five vehicles and then there's six base stations for the shops.
How many people you have in the field, not counting office people?
So, we have 42 staff and secondary roads and there's 11 of us in...
So you got roughly 30 people.
Yeah, 30 to 31 people, yes.
Is the sheriff still here? My understanding, you're looking at going on the E-911 radio system with this here?
Correct. And that system was built robustly enough to be able to support, in fact, we were anticipating being able to bring on secondary roads, public works for the various cities.
Radios Tony, is this same guy you have?
It is not. It sounds like these are non-intrinsic, non-intrinsicly safe, a lower grade of radio than the public safety. Knuckle dragon cops have to have something they can't break.
So, these will have a channel that they'll work on and won't interact with the public safety radio?
Correct.
Unless, there will be, in my understanding, what should be a channel that they can communicate with public safety.
That's our anticipation as well.
And the dispatch center.
Yep. We've had need at times where we have to call a plow truck to be able to get an ambulance someplace or, so having a communication.
She indicated Tony that they would, safety's at one of the factors of it, but if they have a cellphone, what would you use to call 911, the cellphone or the radio?
If they have direct communication to dispatch, it would be quicker to call dispatch. The turnaround would be quicker by maybe a minute or two, but it would be quicker. And depending on how busy the dispatch center is, it could be even longer, you know, for them to get that call answered. So, we, it's not unrealistic and we've had it, I actually responded to a call out by Country View one day where they had a guy go around the barricades and run right through when they were replacing the, the bridge on Dunkerton Road. And I was the first call, or car there, but they, that's how they called it in, was a 911 call to us and I happened to be on Wagner Road at the time. If they would have communicated on radio, I would have heard it as well. So that all worked out fine, we were able to get him, we excited him, took care of it. They see stuff like that all the time. We do some cooperative training every year where we talk about things that we would like them to be on the lookout out in the county when they're road grading and things of that nature. We've done methamphetamine lab training and things of that sort with them as well.
Are they going to be able to talk to you, Squid Car?
That's our hope. There'll be a channel that we can, obviously, most of their chatter is going to be back and forth on their own frequency, on their own...
But I mean, you're going to allow them to switch and talk to you or your officers?
We want a channel that we can be interoperable. Yep, yeah.
And our current radio system is on the phase one?
Correct. And when they called, Diana called me last, I don't know, Thursday. Thursday, right before, right before Raycom got hit by a tornado. And we had a good conversation about the necessity of actually buying phase two radios. All of, all of our radios we bought were phase two capable, but they're actually phase one radios. I don't know, frankly, if there's a, a cost savings associated with buying a phase two radio upfront, but on the backside, there certainly is a cost savings if you bought it with phase two in it now.
Well, our current radios were bought in 2012.
I'm sorry?
Current radios were bought in 2012, which doesn't seem like that long ago. How long are these going to last? Are we looking at the same turnover or are these are going to be obsolete in six years?
Dianex should cover here, we're anticipating 15 to 20 years.
Because you don't, you won't support the phase one is what you're saying?
Phase one will go away, we'll have to go to phase two. We've built the system knowing we're going to have to go to...
But I'm talking about what they currently use in the Engineers Department.
That doesn't even, that's not even the same system.
It's a whole different protocol.
Yeah, they're on a completely different bandwidth.
So how long are these phase twos supposed to last that the Engineering Department's getting?
It would be the same as the public safety, they're still a very rugged radio designed to last the, you know, like you said, 15 to 20 years. This is a software...
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
This is a software-based radio and so it would be, requires possibly software upgrades, but that's all included in their maintenance contract. Where the other radios that they had were a DMR, it's a different protocol, it talks a different language. And so basically, the system that engineering was on and is on now wasn't designed to talk to the P-25 that the public safety is using. P-25 is a protocol that was designed after September 11th for interoperability and open air interface that all, all departments could use to talk to each other regardless of what brand radio they used. The DMR that engineering's on is more of a proprietary, private network. And unfortunately, the DMR protocol, the DMR radio that they were using, we were notified last week, I came in and met with Kathy and Marge to tell them, there was a patent infringement lawsuit we were unaware of until we got notice of it last week. And because the courts ruled against the manufacturer, right now, we don't know if they'll be producing any more of the radios, if we can get parts. So regardless, they will have to, within I would say the next six months to a year, be off of the existing network because of this patent infringement.
Are you aware of any counties that will be carrying the same radio, this P-2?
Yeah, Lynn...
About the Engineering Department, I'd like to...
Lynn County does right now. And Johnson County will probably be moving to that. They had the same DMR radio that Blackhawk County Engineering was using, but Lynn County has already moved to the phase two voice radios. And I, and we're, Iowa County is just building that same network out.
Do you have Lynn County's account or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the maintenance agreement?
The maintenance agreement is a per radio price and it's $84 a year and that covers all their, any reprogramming that needs to be done, any maintenance to the radio, any software upgrades. So basically, what it does is prevent them from having to come in and submit bills for repairs and upgrades and reprogramming or anything else. All those things are covered. And it also, for our onsite services for them if they need it.
Is there any above an additional charge then?
No, it's a flat fee.
How long is that good for?
That we, it's up, we have a 10-year program that they can use this, that will hold this price with a 3% annual increase.
So it's an annual cost?
Mm-hmm.
How much was that Kathy?
It's, it's, well, the 5124?
Yes.
Five thousand, 124 dollars.
Is there a possibility that you could go on the maintenance program that E-911 has since you're using the same radio?
This is, we're giving them that contract price. So all the radios were priced per the 911 contract and so is the maintenance so that they could take advantage of those contract prices.
Thank you.
So this, this change you're talking about from the infringement rights, so why couldn't we go under whoever we infringed on, have, you know, by their contract?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I mean...
Well, there's still radios out there, right? There's still people on, on these old radios that are going to still be able to use them every year that we're not supposedly going to be able, you don't know for sure, we're never, we're not going to be able to use them, right?
You can use them, but if they go bad, if you have problems with it, we probably aren't going to be able to get you parts and...
But I'm saying, why couldn't we go to these other people and get the parts?
Well, there's other problems with that too, that, I mean, if you look at the network right now that they've got and the age of it, the system is not backed up, you don't have redundancy, you don't have monitoring. It's, I look at the investment that you've already made in the public safety network now can be utilized and taken advantage of, you know, and gain benefits from by letting the other departments go on to it versus investing in a protocol that really isn't compatible with the E-911 system. So it's, it's kind of like that Homeland Security initiative that started back in September 11th was to get all these departments interoperable and this P-25 protocol does that. And it's really the wave that everything is moving right now. I mean, this is the same, P-25 is the same protocol that the state is on. So their radios would all be, also be compatible with the state. So I mean, those, that, it's just moving that direction, that's the way things are going, to invest in, in a protocol that's kind of going to the back burner?
Is this the type of radio you think that can withstand the, I want to say abuse, but obviously, the Engineering Department's going to be out in the field, they'd be used, there's a little different than the sheriff's department.
Yeah, they're ruggedized, yes. The radios that we bid to them don't have all the bells and whistles that the, that the public safety folks are using, but it is rugged and it is being used by a lot of other counties. Iowa County has a lot of these same radios out in their field, Lynn County has some, so they're, it's a very rugged, durable radio, built to last.
Kathy, with the reduction in the radios, I mean, we had the cost of 200, 200,000, what's the actual cost now?
So the new cost, as we calculated yesterday, was 163,000, 103.96.
What was budgeted?
158. Yeah, 158 even.
And that's not counting the contract, service agreements?
Right, so then that would be in a different part of our budget, we'll have to budget every year for the maintenance agreement with Raycom plus the maintenance agreement with the E-911.
You're using radios right now?
Yes, the moment, momentum. Yeah, 65.
How many get used on a daily basis?
Oh gosh, on a daily basis, probably half. I mean, our motor graders are, are usually out, you know, plumbing snow, hauling rack, blading rack. Our dump trucks would be the same way, Rick and Wayne.
You know, my, I don't really have a concern, I, I mean, I don't, I don't care about the upgrade, I think it's probably logical. I don't, I've been, you know, doing this for a long time and I keep hearing these things are going to last this long. And I'm not just talking about the radios and they last about half the time. And once we buy them, we've got problems with the new system we put in a 911, they're giving us a timeframe on how long it's going to last and so forth, but my problem is the number of them because I feel that you're going to be putting cars and trucks that aren't even being used, like this lift truck I indicated last week that you probably use 30 days out of a year and you're going to have a radio in there. And to me, that's kind of a waste.
Well, there's also the consideration, yes, some of, for example, our sign truck, it's used less in the winter months because that person is in a truck plowing snow and generally, we're not installing a lot of signs in the winter, but that's a good example where that same individual was, you know, we could run into an emergency situation and it would be nice, really nice to have a radio in the vehicle.
Well, the, the survey truck, I mean, that sits out here over six months a year.
We took it out of that, the seven that we took out.
Yeah, out of what, it's out of there?
Yes.
We removed, there were seven vehicles that Engineering uses, either the Engineering techs or the survey, those were removed because they don't have cell phones.
Out of the roughly 30 people out in the field, how many have cell phones?
We have, um, fine. Rick Wayne.
Secondary roads?
Yes.
Rick Wayne, on call.
Just roughly?
Five.
Five. And then, many people have personal cell phones, of course.
Sure, sure. So the county just pays for five roughly on cell phones?
Yes.
I, I just, the numbers, and, and obviously, you and your staff should know best, I just think the, the radio sitting in a vehicle that's not gonna be used that much, is it gonna work just as well, sitting there, not being used that much? The numbers are the only thing that concern me. Time will tell if they last this ten, fifteen years. I doubt it. But if it breaks, they break it. It's ours then, we have to buy a new one then?
If it's damaged by personnel, yes.
Sure. And the service agreements annually for ten years and a three percent increase?
Right.
We did budget for the maintenance agreement in FY nineteen, although we won't need that because there's a year warranty, so that really won't.
What'd you budget, Marge, do you recall?
I budgeted more than the fifty-one. I think I budgeted about six thousand.
Six thousand.
That's in a different line item, it's not in my capital, but it's still in the budget.
So there, is there a guarantee how long they'll support these radios? Cause you're saying right now, the radio they have, you're not gonna be able to support it in a year with parts?
Yeah, we have no guarantee that we can get parts. We were just notified, along with everybody else, about the court case, and so, right now, our goal is to cease any further sales of that, because it's in flux, and try to get folks moved over to another.
But I'm, I'm saying, it's, it's hard to determine when that's gonna happen.
Yeah, we'll support it as long as we can, but we don't know.
Yeah.
We don't know.
So, the motion, and I believe I made the second, you changed the dollar amount to what it actually is?
One six three, one oh three nine six.
Thank you for all the information, both of you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Little.
No.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
No. Resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer, be approved, direct to chair to sign for same universal impact discount tool for eleven hundred dollars to be used by the engineering department.
Second. So, this is a device that is used to remove large tires, for example, motor grader tires, dump truck tires from the rim. For example, if there, we need to replace the tire, or if the tire's flat, or, this device, we have a different device that breaks the bead of, on the rim, and then this device is actually used to remove the tire from the rim. There are other ways of removing the tire from the rim, but they involve numerous crowbars, and we felt that that is, that is a safety issue. So, I'm requesting that we be allowed to purchase this. This device is different from the other tire changer that we did purchase five or six years ago. That device, machine, is used for light-duty pickup trucks and passenger car tires. You can look at it and see that it is, it is made for smaller diameter, not large tires.
And we didn't address that back then. This is such a liability. I mean, you've got some pretty large tires on.
We do.
Large vehicles.
In the past, we've hired a local company to come in, and we'll have like forty tires on rims sitting there, we need to change tires, for example. Our mechanic was telling me how in the past, we have hired a company, a service, tire service, to come in and to switch all those around for us, and we'll just pay that fee. But that doesn't help us when we need something done right away to this one tire or one vehicle, for example.
Is that an attachment, then, that'll go on the tire changer?
It attaches to an impact pneumatic.
Okay.
An impact branch.
Well, you indicated it was safety, and.
Yes.
I can concur with that. I just, it makes me wonder sometimes, you've been changing them tires for fifty years over there, and all of a sudden, we got a safety problem.
And I realize that, but personnel changes, we do have two new, relatively new mechanics, and they have their own ideas.
I know, and one likes the steering wheel and the grader, and the other one doesn't like the steering wheel, so that's how we buy them.
Yeah.
I just think you're at the stage in your department, to be honest with you, where you're, there are more wants than needs anymore.
Well, I do think sometimes, though, we've probably been, I think staff's probably been doing services and providing work that maybe should've been probably a little safer. We should've been taking advantage of some safety features that we haven't been.
In regards to tires, though, ninety percent of them are changed by tire companies, right?
I'm trying to.
When you got, when you got a flat tire out in the county, who, who changes it? Does somebody come out and change it?
Grader.
Shop? A grader?
I suspect that they do call our mechanic.
Yeah.
They call our mechanics, and we come out, they would come out and.
Change the tire?
Change it if we can, or else we'd have to have it to and back to the shop.
Oh, I was under the understanding you had a company that did it, the same company that do the forty tires. Why would you let forty tires build up? Is that just a, there's no way you'd have forty tires sitting around?
I can remember, at one case, we did have quite a few tires built up. I think we changed tires on the motor graders, and we had several, we had many tires that needed done.
I would think the majority of your tires are large.
Well, like.
Other than the pickup, obviously.
Yes, we have a few smaller pieces of equipment, the tractors would have.
Any other questions?
This wasn't budgeted either?
So this, this is under our tools item, we have a tools, miscellaneous tools in our budget. It's not a capital item, but it's over a thousand dollars, so we're asking for permission to buy it.
Any other questions for Kathy?
Thank you.
This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, it's nine oh five hearing, it is now nine thirty-eight. This is a proposed purchase of tax administration software, motion to receive and place on file proof of publication, a notice of public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second and in discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received.
So move.
Second.
Any or written comments?
Thank you.
No, sir.
Any oral comments?
Thank you.
You're up, Ms. Peter.
Um, they were all received before the deadline.
All right. Five hundred thousand dollars estimated cost.
Yeah, that was based on our previous.
You wanna close the hearing?
Motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, Mr. Maxman. Bits were received, open and read by deadline, now four o'clock, July twentieth, two thousand eighteen, and they were received.
Estimated cost on this is five hundred thousand?
Yeah. DevNet sent a letter and said that they declined to.
The first one.
DevNet, yeah.
How many were sent out? Do you have any idea?
Well, there are three companies, DevNet, Tyler's, and Solutions are the three companies that actually have applications in Iowa. We had two other vendors that had asked to see the proposal, saw it from our website, so, but they declined, or didn't follow through, so. This first one is Tyler Technologies, and, um, they had two separate totals, so I guess we're gonna have to add them together. Four hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents for the base. And then, on our quote, we had training for the different applications, and was another sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents.
Would you read those again, please?
Yeah, four three two, four oh seven, point five zero. And then, the second part was talking about training and some additional applications, was six seven, seven four three, point zero eight.
They have bid bond?
Yeah. What's is it? Do you want a total?
Thank you.
This is Solutions, and it appears that the total on this is four eight three, five nine five, point zero zero. So, four eight three, five nine five, zero, point zero zero, and they do have a bid bond.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Make a motion to place on file for review.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. They had a second page behind here for that second part, and that one is four four, three, or forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. So, four four, three hundred. I apologize.
I have a motion on the floor for placement of file. Robert, a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Do you have a timeline when this is completed?
We'll be long gone, Frank.
Yes, we have, we requested in the RFP that we would be done by February fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Or known as the five-year project.
Next, it's a nine oh seven hearing, bid opening on the proposed Blackhawk County phone system upgrade, now nine thirty, or nine forty-three, four. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication and a notice of public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, any written comments, Grant?
I don't believe so.
All right.
Roy, any written comments?
No.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bits were received and opened and read, bid the headline eight oh three this morning, or eight thirty this morning, sorry, Tuesday, July twenty-fourth. How many we get, Roy?
We received one bid, and it was received on time.
What was estimated budget cost?
Estimated budget cost was three hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. And our one bid is from Marco, out of Urbandale, Iowa.
How many bids you sent out, do you recall?
Uh, we.
Request?
We sent out to several different vendors. We also put it on our Blackhawk County website. We did have one vendor contact us, unfortunately, they did not meet the requirements in the RFP, so they were not able to bid on it. This was a little bit unique, given that the backbone of the system is a Mitel system. So, we had in our RFP that it must be a Mitel vendor that meets certain criteria.
Why can't you stray away from Mitel?
Because that Mitel system is the backbone of the system that we're gonna work off of this IP phone. So, in order to do that, we would've had to start from scratch, and that would've been a much larger cost, so. Over the years, we've done several upgrades to the system to kind of get us to this point with our Mitel system.
Has Marco been a part of the upgrades?
Yeah, Marco's been with the county for several years. They, in fact, hold the service agreement also on our phone system.
Are they with anybody else you know of?
Pardon me?
Are they with anybody else that you know of?
Uh, we did ask, actually, for references. I did not bring that information, but I do know they have systems elsewhere, yeah. Actually, the references should be included on this proposal. This is a little different.
And this, this bid is based on all of our facilities?
Yeah, this would include the sheriff's department, the courthouse, and the Pinecrest facility. It does not include country. Don't cut yourself. Be careful here.
Seems that you probably did all the work.
I'll give you that. All right, we do have a bid security bond here. This, I believe, is a zip drive, just with the proposal on it. Okay, one thing we did, I wanna point out, one thing we did ask for in this proposal is to include a three-year service agreement for all-inclusive parts and labor. So with that three-year service agreement, it appears that we are at three hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Three nine four, eight six four, six eight.
Is that the three-year service agreement in it?
Yes.
How much is that?
It appears that it's twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
Per year?
Doesn't identify that, unless I'm looking at this incorrectly, but it appears that with the three-year agreement, that total is that three ninety-four, eight sixty-four, sixty-eight. In the past, our service agreements usually ran right around twenty-three thousand dollars in that neighborhood a year, so. These are going to be, we anticipated these service agreements to be a little higher due to the licenses that are involved with the Internet Protocol, IP.
But that isn't a three ninety-four?
That's, yes.
Life expectancy of these telephones?
Oh, ten, fifteen years at least, Frank.
What I'd like to do, Mr. Maxman, is go back and review this, cause this is a pretty lengthy RFP, so I can come back.
Oh, gee, you should've brought Abby.
If that's okay with you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to review and place on file.
Robert, a second.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Don't go away, Mr. Givney. Discussion, possible law to action, placement of trees along the employee parking lot, overrun, what's, what street's that? Discussion, possible law to action, placement of trees along the employee parking lot, overrun, what's, what street is that?
Sixth Street is.
Sixth Street, yeah, Sixth Street. And adding window tint to the entry side only of the courthouse vestibule.
Okay, we'll touch on the trees first, Chuck, if you can turn on the monitors, please. I had been requested to look at the placement of trees on Seventh Street, the corner of Seventh and Lafayette.
I won't tell him again.
Chuck, can you please turn on the monitors, please? So I'd reached out to the city forester for guidance throughout this project, and I'll identify that here as soon as it shows up on the monitors. There we go. Good. Okay. All right, so if you notice.
On Seventh Street?
Yeah, Seventh Street. And so the requirements or the recommendation from the city forester was to put it twenty feet minimum setback from the lot pin, which you'll see my mouse there that identifies essentially the lot pin going twenty feet in. And then providing a twenty-five foot spacing in between each tree. By doing that, we were able to place eight trees in this area. And then also, these trees would need to be, have a setback of six foot off the curb.
Is that county or city land?
Well, we're, we're responsible for that, it's technically outside of our, our lot or our property, but essentially, we're still.
It's the right of way of city.
Yeah, it's the right of way, but we're still responsible to maintain it. So again, with the city forester, we looked at this area, he had provided me several recommendations for what they call street trees. Looking at, through those recommendations, I have, I've identified a couple trees that I thought, given the height, would be a decent tree for those areas, and they're red maples and pears. The pears are non-fruit producing pear, there's several of them throughout the city of Waterloo. They actually range thirty to forty feet tall, the red maple is forty to fifty feet tall. The recommendation, if we were to move forward with this, is to have at least a minimum of a two-inch diameter tree to start off with, just to prevent, or to be more, I guess, to withstand any type of potential vandalism or weather. Going anything smaller than that, they tend to see problems getting them to survive, so. Again, this was a recommendation to me, this is as far as I've gotten to this point. I do have a suggested cost, planted cost of four hundred dollars per tree, which would put us at about thirty-two hundred dollars for the whole project.
How does this fit into your master plan for, for all of the county properties?
As far as landscaping goes?
Yes.
You know, honestly, prior to, a few months back, this particular area had never been looked at, so I, with the space that we have available, it's, it's not a bad idea, it's not a bad area, we have the space.
What's the reasoning for the trees?
I think partly due to aesthetics would be, I guess, probably the main thing.
I had a lot of requests from folks living in that neighborhood, where they've, they've done a lot, there's been a lot of investment in the neighborhood in the last ten years or so, about fifteen new homes and rehabilitated homes, and so it's just an effort to improve, you know, the border that we share with it, that's, that's the start of the residential area right there. And so ultimately, you know, increasing property values over time as, as property values rise back up in that neighborhood.
Where do you currently push the snow now off of our parking lot?
That's one of my concerns, is that lot, as you can imagine, or as you can see, we have the railroad tracks over on the west side. Right now, we, we push it in a couple different places, we put a small pile there on the gravel by the railroad tracks, but we like to stay away from that as much as we can, because the problem that we run into there is when the outsourced company comes and removes the snow, if they pick up any of that gravel, it gets transported over to our Pinecrest facility, so what happens is that in the spring, we're out there picking up gravel in our yard, so we try to avoid that, so then the other option is to pile it into this area here where these trees are at. Now, keep in mind, we are looking at a twenty-five foot spacing. I would be a little concerned if we did have a real significant snow, we would have to definitely be very careful working around those trees.
What's Kitty Corner is Waterloo lot that the county used to have. What's Waterloo planning to do that, you have any idea?
I, I don't, I, I, there, it's been several years back, I think there is discussion about developing that, but I have not heard anything lately.
So the city of Waterloo has agreed to maintain those, is that what you're saying?
As of right now, the city forester said they do have a truck, watering truck that comes downtown, and they would be willing to water those. It's not a formal, by no means, it's not a formal agreement, but, you know, if we were to move forward with this, I would have more conversation with the city forester about that. We're really not set up in our department, we have a very small watering tank that we've used years ago, but it wouldn't be probably sufficient for what we need.
Any utilities going down that stretch?
That's something we would have to, we don't believe there is, but if, if the board is willing to let me move forward on this, look a little harder, that's something obviously we'd have to take into account.
Is this budgeted?
No.
Roy, what's the, I mean, we've obviously had trees along Sixth Street. A lot of those had to be removed because they've been dying off, and around the courthouse, we've had trees that have died off. What makes you believe that we would be able to maintain these trees without losing them?
Well.
Based on being in, in the city environment, where there's a lot of salt being used on the streets?
That's mainly why I did reach out to the city forester, because that was one of my concerns, is a lot of salt and sand from this parking lot. Are we going to even be able to make a tree grow in this area? And so that's where he provided me a list of trees that he felt would be strong enough to withstand that. And again, they, they actually call those street trees for Iowa, so. I asked a question to the forester, and he indicated they have several trees on eastmans throughout the cities, and they've held up well, so.
Yeah, concerned about how in the snow, could you reduce the number of trees that you have there?
That is certainly an option, like I said, I just, when I put this together, I maximize the space, but that is certainly something that would, would, would gain us more space for.
Do we have property, JCS property, Kitty Corn across the street, is treeless?
We, on Seventh Street alongside JCS, we've actually taken advantage of the city of Waterloo's program, tree program, and we've planted, the first tree we put there was unsuccessful, it was a very, it wasn't a very mature tree. The second one, it appears like it's going to survive. So we did actually transplant a tree, if you recall, a few years ago, we had to replace the sewer line. We transplanted that tree over here to the courthouse. First year, it, it's looked very good, now it's, it's dead, it didn't survive, so that tree has to be removed.
What is that currently, grass or?
Pardon me?
Grass or concrete or asphalt?
It's, where the trees are located, that's all grass, yeah.
It sounds like you got a little bit more work investigation you want to do on it before we make any decisions, is that correct?
And that's why I wanted to bring it to the board today, I just wanted some direction, if you want me to spend some time and really, if, if you're interested in reducing the number of trees, I can certainly put that together.
I think you're gonna have trouble plowing.
I, I do believe there will be an issue with that, but I think if we can get creative, at least get something, some trees there, and then dedicate an area that we can put our snow, what we do here.
You should look at the rest of our property downtown here, what we're gonna do and put it in the proposal.
I can do that.
Be a good time to do it, next year's budgeting process.
Yeah, I think we were talking about having, looking at more of an overall plan, or maybe not, for where we could. I know there was certain types of landscaping we said we probably wouldn't allow, but we thought there was some that we certainly should look at, so.
No, we can, we can certainly do that with all of our facilities, properties. Again, this was brought to me as a request, so I just wanted to be able to share it with the whole board and get your, your take on it.
I'm certainly fine with looking at, considering it, I'm thinking of other options, I guess, or things that I'd like to see from a landscaping standpoint that would be beneficial in other areas. To me, I, I know that's right across the street from Dicky Printing, I believe.
Yeah, there's Dickies and then houses.
Yeah, there's a couple houses, but I think there's, for the most part, there's like a couple properties owned by Dickies, so I think it's like one property owner, as far as benefiting a whole neighborhood, I guess I'm thinking too, it was eight trees.
And he's got, he's got his business for sale.
Oh, does he?
I don't know, our track record is not very good on landscaping, this thing behind us here.
Do you want to ask, or should I ask, how long do you expect these trees to last?
Ten, fifteen years.
Could I add one more thing?
Sure.
The, the value of them as shade for the people parking in the parking lot is, I think, very high. Just shade in general in downtown area is worthwhile, and people who park on that side of the lot would really appreciate shade.
People who park on that side of the lot.
And the birds that rest in them?
Yeah. You take the good with the bad.
There's no cranapples on these.
Put some walnut trees there.
All right, if there's no other discussion on the trees, the other item that I have is applying a window tint to the entry side only of the vestibule. Just to give you a little background, with the security guards that we have down there, this has been a kind of an ongoing issue that's been brought to our attention with regards to the glare that they're receiving as they're standing there at the guard station that comes through that vestibule. And so they asked if we would look at placing a window tint just on that entry side. The reason I'd only suggest doing the entry side is I would like to leave the, the exit side with no tint, because we do rely on the, the heat that generates in that vestibule in the wintertime. We've already had a situation where a sprinkler line had, had broken there, and I, I would hate to create a problem of that area getting even colder.
You don't think that'd look funny, just doing the one window?
I don't think so, I really don't think you'll even notice it, to be honest.
I could still see clearly out there.
Pardon me?
Security can see clearly yet.
Yeah, just, I don't know if you can see this, it's, it's on a white background, but that's about the shade that we're looking at to, to reduce that glare. We looked at another option too, and that option was to simply just do the, the two doors right before you get to the security officers. If those doors could remain shut, then that would provide a barrier there. Technically, if the entry was open to the stairwell, those doors would have to be shut anyway for, for fire code. But being that the entry is separated off of the stairwell, that door can be open, so you got two options. We can either do the doors, or we could do the vestibule glass. I do have a member on staff who does this on the side. I'd be looking at purchasing material only, we'd be in the neighborhood of about four hundred dollars for the material.
That's for the whole vestibule, not the?
That's, that's for the entry side only.
I mean, yeah, entry side, doors would be.
I, you know, honestly, I didn't even quote the, the doors, but I think we could safely assume probably less than half of that.
If we're just doing that one side, it's gonna make a difference.
For the guards, as they're looking out, and that's the only thing that we're trying to accomplish here, is to reduce the glare.
That's fine, could get a pair of sunglasses, might be cheaper.
Could look a lot cooler down there.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the window tinning for the entrance side.
What's the cost of that, you know?
Approximately four hundred dollars for the material.
Just for the one side, or is that originally for all of them?
That's just for the entry side.
We're gonna do that ourselves?
Yes.
Got a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, any reports or information from the board?
I'd just like to compliment conservation, I think, did I see, you're here. The trail has been opened up, Cedar Valley Nature Trail, all the way to the Wolf Creek Bridge, and I think it really was beneficial, is beneficial, I see a lot of people writing on that trail system. Good work done.
Like to send out our condolences to the Harold Getty family, Harold passed away yesterday, so send out our condolences to Getty family. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second?
All in favor, aye?